This is the regularly scheduled public session of the Woodbridge Board of Education and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, also known as Sunshine Law. This meeting has been approved by resolution adopted by the reorganization meeting held on January 3rd, 2023. Notification has been sent to the record. Notification has also been posted in a Woodbridge Borough Hall, the Woodbridge Memorial Library, tapinto.net, and the Woodbridge Board of Education website. Please be advised that all or a portion of this meeting is being livestreamed in real time and will be recorded for rebroadcasting at a future date. Vol call?
Mr. Beaumonty.
President.
Mr. Fallon.
Here.
Mr. Gorvan.
Here.
Mr. Nieves is absent. Mr. O'Byrne.
Here.
Mr. Vicaro was absent.
Okay, for presentations and presentation recognition awards, first we'll start with the superintendent's report. Mr. Abell?
Thank you, Mr. Fallon. Good evening, everyone. My report opens this evening with a recapitulation of our last week of school. On June 14th, our preschool disabled classrooms held their move-up celebrations in their respective classrooms. Students and their families had a wonderful time. Wish to thank the teachers and paraprofessionals for putting the program together. On June 15th, our kindergarten students conducted their celebration in the all-purpose room. This was our first kindergarten ceremony in quite some time due to the fact that we discontinued the general ed pre-K program. It was very well done. Thank you to our teachers and paraprofessionals for putting this program together. On the evening of June 15th, our Woodbridge Intermediate School conducted their promotional exercises on the Donna Ricker Memorial Field. It was a delightfully cool and breezy evening. The event was well-attended by family and friends, and the students appeared to be quite excited to walk into the high school in September. Thank you to the intermediate school staff for getting our students prepared for their next big step. On June 16th, the Doyle 3rd graders conducted their annual farewell program. The students did a remarkable job throughout the program, and we cannot begin to offer enough kudos to the 3rd grade teaching team. It has been quite the tradition at Doyle to have a commemorative video made highlighting the 3rd grade year, and as always, it was very good. I believe it's out there somewhere, dare I say, it might have gone viral by now, so if you get a chance to see it, it's extraordinary. On June 16th, the last day of school, our 8th graders walked out of the high school building for the last time as 8th graders. For those students who will be attending a different school, the 9th grade, we wish them all the best of luck. For those students attending the 9th grade in our high school building, we look forward to welcoming the Woodbridge High School class of 2027 back in September. Lastly, on the evening of June 16th, the Woodbridge Junior-Senior High School conducted its graduation ceremonies outdoors on the Ricker Memorial Field. I wish to thank the community for their patience as we navigated through the turbulent weather that afternoon. I wish to thank Mr. Suro, Mrs. Ruiz, and Mrs. Sinclair for their coordination of staff and students for the event. I think we all became somewhat more of an informed meteorologist during that time. I especially want to thank our building and ground staff members, led by Mr. Makinech, for answering the call, as always, and allowing us to pivot to an outdoor ceremony once the weather permitted us to do so. It all happened in the span of 90 minutes, and once the storm front moved out, the field was set up for graduation. We're so happy for our graduating seniors, the class of 23, and I'm delighted to report that the graduation ceremony was flawless. The speeches by our students absolutely remarkable, and there was a great deal of pride on that field that evening. Thank you to our high school staff members for helping to prepare our 12th graders for their next step of their educational journey. With regards to our performing arts program, the annual Intermediate School Spring Concert was held on June 1st in the Bischoff Gymnasium. The event was very well-attended, and the vocal and instrumental performances were superb. Thank you to Mr. Sippel, Mr. Quotley, and Mrs. Avis Manalakakis for the preparation of the program. The Woodbridge High School Spring Concert was heard on June 5th, held on June 5th in the high school auditorium. The concert was split into two groups: our band, followed by our choir program slash glee club. The split was to allow for a safer and more comfortable seating environment, as these events are always well-attended. Thank you to Mrs. Avis Manalakakis and Mrs. Sturba for the coordination of the program. It was wonderful to see our performers bask in the glow of the new stage lighting and sound system in the auditorium. The Doyle School Spring Concerts were unfortunately rescheduled due to the poor air quality created by the recent wildfires in Canada and the blown wind into our area. The decision was made to have each grade perform at one of their culminating school events. The kindergarten students performed their concert as part of their promotional program. The 1st grade students performed during the annual 1st grade family breakfast, the 2nd grade students during the Doyle Zoo Program, I believe, and the 3rd grade students at their farewell program. Thank you to Mr. Quotley for coordinated effort along with Ms. Schmidt. It ended up with each grade performing for their families in a wonderful environment. Regarding our agenda this evening, it is a bit longer than usual, as it is at this time of the year when many annual renewals of various vendor contracts take place in addition to those actions required by statute. We are also approving items from our last board meeting due to the lack of a voting form. Items that I wish to bring to the attention of the board and to the public include the following: The board will be approving our various summer programs for both special education students and general education students, both in and out of district this evening. I'm pleased to say we have field trips already scheduled for the upcoming school year. We have many items related to personnel this evening. We're approving co- and extracurricular positions for the upcoming school year. We are accepting the resignations this evening of staff members, Ms. Lunam, Mrs. Fullerton, and Mrs. Wall from the Intermediate School. We are also accepting the resignation of Ms. Nazaro, one of our school counselors. We wish them well in their future endeavors. We are also accepting the resignation this evening of Mrs. Janine Murray, our school business administrator/board secretary, after eight years of service. Personally, Mrs. Murray, I want to wish you the best. Thank you for being so much of incredible assistance to me, both in my time as a building principal, as well as a new superintendent. You broke me in very well. I thank you for your service and for the leadership provided to my administrative team. We are currently conducting interviews for all of our vacant positions and should have all corresponding appointments made for the July board meeting. In Board Operations, the board is approving the most recent revision of the District's Safe Return and Continuity of Services Plan. This plan was a mandate of the state during the pandemic and requires a revision to be board-approved every six months for at least another school year. Obviously, as we have moved through the pandemic, many of the items that first appeared are no longer a component of the current version. The version is linked in this evening's agenda and will be posted on the school district website tomorrow, once approved. If any members of the public have any questions or concern regarding the plan, they can discuss it today during the public portion or communicate that with me at any time. It's a rather long Board Operations agenda. Please note that one item was added as an addendum today, and it's on the website as an addendum. It deals with the approval of the submission of required paperwork to the county and state involving the addition to the Doyle School. The addition is being referred to as the Highland Avenue Learning Annex and Recreation Center. We're also walking in a resolution in Board Operations Number 74. This resolution deals with the memorandum of agreement between the Woodbridge Board of Education and the Woodbridge Administrators Association. The memorandum of agreement is for a three-year period beginning this past July 1st retroactively through June 30th of 2025. I want to wish everyone a long, safe, and restful summer recess. A reminder that the building administration will be taking vacation time at various points of the summer, and this could impact responses to emails and/or phone calls. As always, anyone can reach out directly to my office for assistance as well. Thank you, Mr. Fallon.
Thank you, Mr. Abell. On to the Student of the Month awards. We're gonna go backwards. We'll start with Mr. Sarah, Mr. Lisa, and then Mr. Abell will fill in for Ms. Schmidt.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to present the Woodbridge High School Students of the Month for both May and June. I will be reading comments submitted to me by these students' teachers and coaches, and I applaud them for this wonderful acknowledgement. I will call out the student's name. If they are here, I ask that they join me so they can be duly recognized. May Students of the Month, Grade 7, Sarah Baghdadi. Sarah here? Sarah is a very hard-working student that takes great pride in her academics. Sarah comes to school daily, ready to work. She is not hesitant to request feedback from her teachers to make sure that her work is done well and correctly. Sarah gets along well with her peers and is always willing to help out her classmates whether working independently or in group settings. Congratulations, Sarah. 8th grade, Mylan Perez. Mylan is an exemplary student and a selfless friend in the 8th grade, leading by example in and out of the classroom. During the Washington DC trip, she guided a student who needed assistance without being prompted and helped them to enjoy the remainder of the trip. Congratulations, Mylan. 9th grade, Brianna Carabinos. Brianna is a caring and genuine student who goes above and beyond to succeed in the classroom. She is respected by her peers and a true pleasure to have in class. Congratulations, Brianna. For 10th grade, Daniel Aguirrazo. Daniel is extremely hard-working in my class and is always offering to help me get the class situated. He also will always help other students if they are absent or if they need help with what we are learning. He is kind, friendly, and is always extremely respectful to me and his classmates. Congratulations, Daniel. 11th grade, Paige Bakunowicz. Is Paige here? Paige is a hard-working student, and she always is looking to learn and own the class material. She is very kind and adds positivity and leadership to the classroom. Her insights to material are always well-thought-out and inspires others to actively participate in class. Congratulations, Paige. Grade 12, Camilla Martinez. Camilla is a kind-hearted and caring person and always shows the utmost respect to students and staff alike. Her leadership in and out of the classroom should never be understated, and she will be missed next year. I am sure that she will add great value to any community she joins upon graduations. Congratulations, Camilla. Now for the June Students of the Month. For 7th grade, Jack Cordes. Is Jack here? Come on up, Jack. Jack is a leader amongst his peers, and he is academically gifted. He works very hard to keep his grades high and is always one to help out in class, whether it be answering questions or helping out a classmate. Congratulations, Jack. For 8th grade, Jack Iglesias. Is Jack here? Jack adds a lot of value to the sporting events we have at school as an announcer, emcee, and DJ. He enjoys helping out during games, and his presence in the booth will be missed next year. We appreciate all of his support to the Blue Devils athletic program. Congratulations, Jack. 9th grade, Kevin Francesco Diaz. Kevin? Kevin is a wonderful asset to our school. His ability to help his peers as they navigate learning English has allowed them to be more successful in classes and better integrated into our school community. He is kind and thoughtful and a great support to his friends. He is always one to volunteer in class and shows great resilience and grit each day. Congratulations, Kevin. For 10th grade, Dulce Martinez. Dulce? Dulce is a tremendous part of our high school community and simply a pleasure to teach each day. She is a gifted artist and has her award-winning art pieces exhibited around the county, most notably in Bergen County Judicial Offices. She is a joy to have in class, and her quiet confidence and leadership should not be overlooked. Congratulations, Dulce. 11th grade, Jerry Rivera. Jerry is a high-performing student and is always looking to improve. He actively participates in class and has been a help to his peers when needed. He is an active member of many clubs and truly embodies the Blue Devil way. Congratulations, Jerry. And finally, 12th grade, Leah Spacek. Leah here? Come on up.
Leah is a new student to us, having come to us as a senior. Although it can be tough to navigate being new to school, especially as a senior, she managed it with hard-work confidence and an open mind. She quickly became known for her kindness and diligence and became a fast and true friend to many in the school. She served as a great role model during her time with us, and we are confident that she will be very successful as she moves on from high school.
Good evening, everyone. We've got some Students of the Month here for the Intermediate School. I got four Students of the Month. I have one in each grade, and I got an extra one in the 4th grade. They couldn't make up their minds, so we're giving out two tonight. It's nice to see some happy faces on our students tonight. I presume that's because we have no school tomorrow, and we're enjoying ourselves. We're gonna move over to our 4th grade first. I'd like to welcome up Ms. Ava Fishkelta. Come on up, Ava.
Ava is incredibly hard-working, pays attention in all her classes, and always strives to do her very best. If she doesn't understand a concept, she never hesitates to ask for help and never gives up. In addition to being a motivated student, she is always respectful and kind to both teachers and classmates. In school, her favorite subject is reading, and her favorite genre is nonfiction. She enjoys reading about historical events. Outside of school, she loves competing on her cheering competition team and enjoys tumbling. When she isn't participating in cheering, she can be found swimming in her pool. When she grows up, she would love to be a nurse. She looks up to and hopes to be just like her mom, who is also a nurse. Her mom inspires her and pushes her to achieve her goals and reminds her to never give up. Congratulations to one of two 4th grade students of the month for June, Ms. Ava Fishkelta. Congratulations to our second student of the month in the 4th grade, Ms. Mia Marrera. Is Mia here? Come on up, Mia.
Mia, too, is hard-working, pays attention in all her classes, and truly cares about doing well. Even if she doesn't understand something, she always keeps trying. She is also respectful to both her teachers and classmates alike. In school, her favorite subject is math. Outside of school, she loves doing gymnastics, in which she is on a competing team, and she also loves drawing. When she grows up, she would love to be a math teacher. Just wanted to double-check here, because it appears we have a student who is sucking up. She knows what she's doing. She's going on to the 5th grade. Her favorite teacher is in the 5th grade. That's Ms. Opita, and she would love to be just like Ms. Opita, who is also a math teacher. Good job, Mia. Very smart. Nice big congratulations, warm applause for Mia Marrera. And over to the 5th grade. We have Mr. John Amabile. Come on up, John. John is very respectful, always tries his best, and is involved in many school activities. I am told that this honor is something he has been hoping for ever since the 4th grade, and here it is. Well-deserved. His favorite subjects are social studies and science. In his free time, he enjoys playing with Legos and talking to his friends. He says that his favorite teacher is Ms. Palmary, because she helps him a lot. His favorite place to eat is McDonald's, and when he grows up, he wants to work for Google. He's gonna know all about you real soon. All right. Nice big round of applause for Mr. John Amabile. And our fourth and final Student of the Month, and our final Student of the Month for the 2022-23 school year in the 6th grade, is Ms. Alyssa D'Angelo. Oh, I thought it was gonna go four for four. Okay, Alyssa is the true definition of well-rounded. She is a wonderful student and always puts her best foot forward. She is extremely active outside of school and extracurriculars, and she is an amazing daughter and sister within her family. She is kind, respectful, and responsible. Her favorite subject in school is the LA, and she enjoys writing. She finds science to be the most challenging subject, though. She looks up to her mom and dad because they support her in every possible way. They support her passion for soccer and softball, as well as choir and safety patrol. Congratulations to Ms. Alyssa D'Angelo. We are so proud of you and hope you'll do very well right here in the high school in just a few short months.
Thank you very much. Good evening. On behalf of Ms. Schmidt, the principal of the Doyle School, it is an incredible honor for me to say a few words about our May Students of the Month. And before reading these comments, I just want to say that when I read about these four students, I'm proud of four families, four students, and four individuals, whether they be staff members or classmates, because it's one thing to have the things said about you. That speaks to the student, him or herself, but also to be someone who is so observant and appreciative of what these kids do. You know, as a teacher, principals ask a lot of us every day, answering questions and answering emails, et cetera. When I read these statements, it tells me that every teacher takes it to heart, and it's incredible to see what these young people are doing in the Doyle School. Each month, the Doyle School focuses on a specific character education theme. Since May encompassed many school-wide initiatives and activities around the theme of citizenship, grade-level teachers were asked to nominate a student on behalf of their respective grade that best embodies this important trait. The teachers wrote the following rationales for the students. And when I call your name, I apologize if I mispronounce it. I'd like you to come up, because I'd like you to stand next to me when I say the words about you in the kindergarten. Giada, I want you to listen closely to this, okay, because it's wonderful. Quote, "Giada is receiving the Citizenship Student of the Month Award because she is responsible, honest, has good listening skills, and is kind." Exclamation mark. Giada takes pride in her work, works well with peers, communicates, and is always most positive. She is a great role model to her fellow classmates. Congratulations, Giada. Now I'm gonna bring somebody up. Hopefully, she won't be so lonely up here. 1st grade, Mia Tarabacia. Quote, "Mia is the picture of good citizenship. She is kind, generous, responsible, and always willing to help others in the school and classroom community. She displays a positive attitude and a caring heart. Mia recognizes good choices and inspires others to be their best selves." Mia, that's remarkable. Mia Tarabacia. Is Henry Thompson here? I'm gonna call him and tell him these words that were said for him. Henry's a 2nd grader, and quote, "You will not find a sweeter boy than Henry Thompson." He is the epitome of what it means to be a good citizen. He is respectful of others and their feelings, trustworthy, honest, and most of all, he takes responsibility for his actions. I am so proud of him this year." That's Henry Thompson. Last but not least, in the 3rd grade, Elise Manziano. Elise is an exceptional classmate. She is caring and friendly and always a positive role model. Elise exhibits characteristics consistently that her school community can look up to. The Intermediate School is getting a phenomenal 4th grader in September. Thank you.
We'll take a couple of seconds here for everyone, anyone that wants to leave. We will not be offended. We have our regular business to go through. Wait a minute. Three. Okay. Moving on. Approval of minutes. Upon recommendation to the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the minutes of the following meeting: Executive and Work Session Meeting, Executive and Public Session Meeting, April 24th, May 8th, and May 22nd, 2023. Can I have a motion? Mr. O'Byrne? Mr. Garvin? Vol call?
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Gorvan?
Yes, but I'll abstain from May 22nd.
Ms. O'Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Vicaro's absent. Mr. Beaumonty?
Yes.
Mr. Nieves is absent.
Okay, on to the committee reports. Mind if I go through it, gentlemen? Yeah, very deep breaths. It's a long one. All right. Curriculum Instruction. Approval of Evaluation Report. With Monarchi. Approval of Field Trip Requests. Approval of to terminate out-of-district placement, attend new placement. Approval of in-district for extended school year 2023 placements related services. Approval of out-of-district extended school year 2023 placement-related services and transportation for Monarchi, including Monarchi. Approval of out-of-district extended school year 2023 placement-related services and transportation. Approval of professional development requests. Approval of workshop. Approval of field trips. Approval of student-teacher classroom observation, field experience internship. Under Personnel, we have Approval of Personnel Appointment. Approval of student volunteers for community hours for the after-care program for the 2022-2023 school year. Approval of Appointment of Substitutes. Acknowledgement of Retirement, Angela Danielle. Approval of Woodbridge Intermediate School 6th Period Teaching Stipend, 2022-2023. Approval of Co-Curricular Appointment for 2023-24 School Year for Before Care. Approval of Appointment for Care Personnel, 2023-24. Approval of Personnel Reappointment, 2023-24 District Substitutes. Approval of Woodbridge High School Co-Curricular Appointments for the 2023-24 School Year. Approval of WRIS Co-Curricular Appointments for the 2023-24 School Year. Approval of Doyle Co-Curricular Appointments for the 2023-24 School Year. Approval of Reappointment of Athletic Site Manager, 2023-24, Charlie Trent Acosta. Approval of Request for Extension of Leave of Absence. Approval of Staff Transfers, 2023-24. Approval of Summer Acceleration Learning Personnel Appointment. Approval of Personnel Appointment. Approval of Co-Curricular Appointment for the 2022-23 School Year for Before Care. Approval of Revised Stipend for WRIS Co-Curricular Appointment to the 2023 School Year. Approval of Revised Stipend for WRHS Co-Curricular Appointment for the 2022-23 School Year. Approval of Personnel Appointment, Summer 2023 Curriculum Writing. Acceptance of Resignation, including Monarchi. Approval of Coaching Appointment. Approval of Summer Secretary Substitute. Approval of Authorization for Superintendent Albro to appoint Unaffiliated Positions. Under Policy, we have One, Approval of Policies. Under Buildings and Grounds, we have Approval of Statement of Assurance for the 2022-23 Lead Testing Program for Submission to the County Office. Approval of Facility Request. Under Finance, we have Approval of Bills List. Approval of Monthly Finance Reports for the Board Secretary and Treasurer. Approval of Certification of Balanced Budget. Approval of Budget Transfers. Approval of Fundraisers. Approval of Tax Payment Schedule. Approval to Accept Additional Extraordinary Aid. Approval for Authorization of Cancellation of Outstanding Checks Drawn on the General Fund Account. Approval of Authorizations for Cancellations on the Outstanding Checks Drawn on the Student Activity Account. Approval of Authorization of Cancellation of the Outstanding Checks Drawn on the Food Service Account. Approval of Authorization of Cancellation of Outstanding Checks Drawn on the Salary Account. Acceptance of Stipend from NJSIAA. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Phoenix Advisors LLC for the 2023-24 School Year as Continuing Disclosure Agent and Independent Registered Municipal Advisor, IRMA. Board Operations, we have Approval of Ratification of May 8th, 2023 Public Session. Board Meeting Resolutions. Approval of Agreement with New England Institute of Technology for Occupational Therapy Internships. Approval to Submit Amendment for 2023 Application for ESEA/ESSA. Approval of Food Management Service Contract for 2023. Approval of Doyle Co-Curricular Appointments for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Reappointment of Athletic Site Manager 23-24 Charlie Trent Acosta. Approval of Request for Extension of Leave of Absence. Approval of Staff Transfers 23-24. Approval of Summer Acceleration Learning Personnel Appointment. Approval of Personnel Appointment. Approval of Co-Curricular Appointment for the 22-23 School Year for Before Care. Approval of Revised Stipend for WRIS Co-Curricular Appointment to the 22-23 School Year. Approval of Revised Stipend for WRHS Co-Curricular Appointment for the 2022-23 School Year. Approval of Personnel Appointment Summer 2023 Curriculum Writing: Acceptance of Resignation, Acceptance of Resignation Including Monarchi. Approval of Coaching Appointment: Approval of Summer Secretary Substitute. Approval of Authorization for Superintendent Albro to appoint Unaffiliated Positions. Under Policy, we have One: Approval of Policies. Under Buildings and Grounds, we have Approval of Statement of Assurance for the 23-23 Lead Testing Program for Submission to the County Office. Approval of Facility Request. Under Finance, we have Approval of Bills List: Approval of Monthly Finance Reports for the Board Secretary and Treasurer of the Board Secretary and Treasurer. Approval of Certification of Balanced Budget: Approval of Budget Transfers. Approval of Fundraisers: Approval of Tax Payment Schedule. Approval to Accept Additional Extraordinary Aid: Approval for Authorization of Cancellation of Outstanding Checks Drawn on the General Fund Account. Approval of Authorizations for Cancellations on the Outstanding Checks Drawn on the Student Activity Account. Approval of Authorization of Cancellation of the Outstanding Checks Drawn on the Food Service Account. Approval of Authorization of Cancellation of Outstanding Checks Drawn on the Salary Account. Acceptance of Stipend from NJSIAA. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Phoenix Advisors LLC for the 23-24 School Year as Continuing Disclosure Agent and Independent Registered Municipal Advisor, IRMA. Board Operations, we have Approval of Ratification of May 8th, 2023 Public Session. Board Meeting Resolutions: Approval of Agreement with New England Institute of Technology for Occupational Therapy Internships. Approval to Submit Amendment for 22-23 Application for ESEA/ESSA. Approval of Food Management Service Contract for 23-24 School Year. Approval of Breakfast/Lunch Prices for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of District Support for Approval of Bills S3203 and A4835. Approval of Resolution of Woodridge Safe Return and Continuity of Service Plan. Approval of Disposal of Textbooks. Approval of Authorization for Board Administrator to Pay Bills Between Meetings. Approval of Disposal of Textbooks. Approval of Application for Toilet Room Facilities, Early Intervention, Pre-Kindergarten and Kindergarten Classrooms for 23-24 School Year. Approval of the Submission of the Application for Dual Use Educational Space 23-24 School Year. Approval of Submission Application for Dual Use of Educational Space for 23-24 School Year. We're getting there. Approval of Submission for Application for Dual Use of Educational Space 23-24 School Year. Affirmation of Superintendent's Report of Incident of Harassment, Intimidation, Bullying, Also known as HIV within the District. Approval of 23-24 Woodridge School District Mentoring Plan and SOA Submission. Approval of Comprehensive Equity Plans: Statement of Assurance 23-24. Approval of Transfer to Maintenance Reserve Account. Approval to Apply and Accept ESEA/ESSA Funds. Approval to Form the Lead Title III Constortion for 23-24 School Year. Approval of Designation of Placement of Legal Ads. Approval of Designation of Official Newspaper. Approval for the Appointment of Board Representative to South Bergen Joint Commission. Approval for the Appointment of Board Representative to the Bergen County Special Services. Approval of Adoption of Travel Guidelines. Approval of Parliamentary Procedures. Approval of the Purchase Manual for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of the Guide for Standard Operating Procedures and Internal Controls for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of the Authorization to Award Contracts. Approval of the Designation for Transfer of Amount. Authorization to Use State and County Contracts and Cooperative Purchasing Agreements. Approval for the Use of State Contracts pursuant to NJSA 18A, Callan 18A-10A. Approval of Anticipated Contracts to be Renewed, Awarded, or Expire during the 23-24 School Year, PL 2015, C47, Chapter 47. Approval of Membership in National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Approval of Membership of the South Bergen Region Workers Compensation Pool. Approval of Board Representatives to South Bergen Workers Compensation Pool. Approval of Chart of Accounts: Designation of Escrow Account for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Establishment of Petty Cash Fund. Approval of Signing Payroll. Approval of Annual Tuition Rate. Approval of Designation of Depository Spitzer Bank, Woodridge Branch. Approval of Investments. Approval of Tax Shelter Annuity Brokers. Approval of the Renewal Contract with Polaris Galaxy Insurance LLC for the School Alliance Insurance Fund. Approval of the Acceptment, excuse me, Approval of the Appointment of the Risk Management Consultant. Approval of Payment for Angela Danielle, Retired June 20th, 2023. Approval of Statutory Appointments for 23-24 School Year. Approval to Apply and Accept IDEA Funds for the 23-24 School Year. Approval to Renew Agreement with Systems 3000 Inc. for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Frontline Technologies for 23-24 School Year. Approval of Agreement with Otis Elevator for 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Contract with Real-Time Information Technologies for 23-24. Approval of Renewal Contract with E-Rate Consulting for 23-24. Approval of Renewal Contract with Monarch Management Corp. for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Good Talking People LLC for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Contract with Strauss Esme Associates LLP for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Handy Lift Service Company Incorporated for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Education Data Services for 23-24. Approval of Renewal Contract for Services with Mary Lou Diamond for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Contract with Fun Fit Therapy for 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Contract with Professional Athletic Training Services, PLLC for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Contract with CCL Therapy LLC for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Membership with NJSIAA 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Butler Water Corrections for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Contract with Biotum Home Healthcare for In-School Nursing Services 23-24 School Year. Approval of Appointment of District Professionals. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Systems Electronic Inc. for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Brightly Software for the 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Contract with DeCaro Rubino Architects for 23-24 School Year. Approval of Renewal Agreement with Enviro Vision Consultants for 23-24 School Year. Approval of the Renewal Agreement with Integrated Systems and Services for the 23-24 School Year. Approval to Proceed with School Facility Project Consisting Generally of New Highland Avenue Learning Annex and Recreation Center to Bergen County and the State of New Jersey, and the Walk-On Item for Tonight, BO74, which includes Monarchi, is Approval of a Memorandum of Agreement between Woodridge Administrators Association and the Woodridge Board of Education, July 1st, 2022, and June 30th, 2025. Gentlemen, any questions that I can't answer? Okay, we have a question from online. Missed that? Yeah, okay. Good try then. All right, gentlemen, anything for new business? Okay, I'm going to open the hearing assistance for any of the four million resolutions before you.
Hi, Melissa Cruz, 335 Columbia Boulevard. I just had a question about the production for activities. Is journalism not happening moving forward at the intermediate school?
Can you repeat that?
Yes, is journalism continuing at the intermediate school? I didn't see it on here as one of the clubs.
Uh, we're accepting the resignation of the staff member who was in charge of that. And as we regroup now, we intend to have it just a matter of finding someone to run it.
Okay, thank you. And I also just want to wish Ms. Alicia Moldel good luck. My daughter started with her in pre-K, and she ended with her in the sixth grade. She didn't have her this year as a teacher, but she was helpful when Michaela needed some extra help with her math skills. So I just want to thank her. She was great for our district.
Thank you.
Bonnie Taylor, 64 Woodridge Street. Um, it's been a while since I've attended a meeting in person, and I apologize. In April, I was hit by a car while crossing the street. Luckily, I survived, but I've been watching online, so I may have missed some things on the agenda. So I have some questions regarding the agenda this evening that I hope you can help me answer. First Amendment, the amendment, First Amendment added that the board held a meeting in regards to the parking space that is being added to the Doyle School. Has the board held a meeting with the mayor and council, Woodridge staff, Woodridge consultants, and stakeholders in regards to this addition? Because I know that that was a topic that was going to be happening before we decided to make any changes to the Doyle property, and I'm not sure if those meetings occurred.
Outside of the presentation that was made a while back introducing the notion to the community, meetings have not taken place as of yet.
They will be taking place soon. Mr. Never was planning on announcing that the meetings will start happening this summer, but unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, so they will be happening soon.
Okay, that's fine, but we're approving now a change without having those meetings. So I have to ask the board, is this entrance ADA compliant?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, it will be.
It will be? Okay. And we're going to make sure that when those meetings happen, there will be a special education parent in attendance to those committees.
Yes, yes, we will be inviting a special education parent. We are extending the patience here.
Okay, I appreciate that. Moving on to Agenda Item I, a PI. We're losing a counselor already on our agenda, yet I see that there are three high school counselors who are going to be receiving some hours over the summer. Thank you for that. However, I see one is receiving 70, while the other two are only receiving 42. Our counselors are stretched so thin right now, and mental illness is such a problem amongst our youth. Is there an opportunity for these counselors to receive more hours if the need arises throughout the summer?
This is, this is a boilerplate number of hours. Um, one counselor is the senior class counselor, so, and she's the main scheduler for the district, so she has more hours. Uh, this is what we have right now budgeted, but we have an allowance of more money. Uh, quite honestly, in the past, the counselors have come in to get due scheduling concerns for the next school year in anticipation of the students. If at any time, any student in our community needs any sort of help in that line, of course, I will avail them to a counselor right away, regardless of how many hours it takes.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that. Thank you. Um, in regards to Item C, I, the evaluations request for Mrs. Jill Crawford. Well, I'm so excited that we're hiring Ms. Crawford again as a vendor for the Woodridge School District, but as you know, she has been listed as a vendor for over five years now as a reading specialist that serves our community. And she's done wonders. She has credentials, she has expertise, certifications. I'm wondering why our district has not looked to hire her full-time as being the, or in Gillingham, certified reading specialist that is serving our community now for five years?
I do not know whether Ms. Crawford has that time to want to devote to that. It's definitely a discussion I could have with her.
I think that would be in the best interest of our district, seeing that there are seven students that are being evaluated for reading needs, and we know from my experience alone that reading needs are an issue for our community. Um, moving on to Item P8M, the job description for substitute secretaries. Can you tell me what a substitute secretary does?
During the summer months, there are times when the building administrator and the administrative assistant are on vacation, and there's no one in the building to be there for summer school, et cetera. So we're hiring a subsecretary to be in the office at that time to handle any phone calls regarding summer school, any registration requests, et cetera. That's the person that we're going to have in the building. It probably will occur less than six times throughout the summer.
Okay, would that substitute serve as the confidential administrative assistant?
There really isn't anything they would handle from that perspective as a confidential administrative assistant, given that the building administrator is not there. They're basically going to be handling any phone calls that come in, any concerns. We do have a nurse at Doyle for summer school, and of course, any other administrator available should there be a need for someone to be down there to address the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Albro. And can you just clarify for me? Is there any sort of endorsement or qualification for a confidential administrative assistant in the district?
An endorsement? Do we employ them? Yes, we do. In the central office, we do. And they have a specific job description.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing non-semen closing the hearing of citizens. Any questions online? Okay, gentlemen, looking for your approval, Monarchi included, the resolutions for curriculum instruction number two, five, seven, nine. Personnel number one, two, three, four, eight, nine, twelve, fourteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five. Policy one, Buildings and Grounds, one and two. Finance, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Board Operations, one through seven, nine, ten, fifteen through, fifteen through seventy-four. Can I get a motion? Mr. Garvin, Mr. O'Byrne, vocal?
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Gorven?
Yes.
Mr. O'Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Vicaro is absent. Mr. Biomonte?
Yes.
Mr. Nevez is absent. Thank you.
Okay, this one's for Woodridge only. Curriculum Instruction, one, three, four, six, ten. Personnel, five, six, seven, ten, eleven, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-four. Nothing for policy, nothing for Buildings and Grounds, nothing for Finance. Board Operations, eight, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Can I get a first? Mr. Biomonte, Mr. Garvin, vocal?
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Gorven?
Yes.
Mr. O'Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Vicaro is absent. Mr. Biomonte?
Yes.
Mr. Nevez is absent.
Anything for communications? Uh, gentlemen, anything for unfinished business? No? Okay, before we open up the hearing, I said, citizens, I'm going to like to turn this over to Mr. Albro for a brief comment about the Doyle School updates.
For those of you who were here last evening or watched remotely, uh, one of the concerns expressed to the board was for the number of sections at each grade level, uh, specifically in the Doyle School. And what I have this evening is a report of kindergarten through grade six as projected for September. And obviously, when I make these projections, it's possible that students are going to transfer in and out, and we'll make adjustments accordingly. Also, when I make these projections, it is inclusive of all students, including students who might have percentages of their day spent in a special education setting. They may spend a certain percentage with the Gen Ed class and a certain percentage with their special ed placement. But these are whole numbers, for lack of a better word. In the sixth grade in September, as of the end of the school year, we have 83 students moving from grades five to six, and they'll become, they'll be in four sections, and the average will be 20 to 21 students. In the fifth grade, there are 63 students, one of our smaller grade levels. There will continue to be three sections following that grade level, and there'll be 21 students on the average in the classroom. In the fourth grade, we have 84 students moving up from the Doyle School. They'll be in four sections, as they are now, and that'll be an average of 21 students in a class. In the third grade, we had the students moving from second to third for September. We have 96 students currently. Currently, they're slotted for four sections, averaging 24 students in a class. In the second grade, as of the end of school, we have 126 students in five sections, which right now averages to be 25 to 26 students in a class. In the first grade, we have 113 students in five sections, which right now averages out between 22 and 23 in each classroom. In the kindergarten, as of now, we have 110 students in five sections, which averages out to 22 students in a section. With regard to the modular, modular units, um, right now, my plan is for one 20 by 48 modular unit with the intention of housing our child study team and our speech services, which would free up two instructional spaces in the Doyle School to accommodate two new special education programs we wish to put into the, into the school year next year. That is our, that is my plan as of now. As this has been a point of conjecture, those are the numbers as they are today. And of course, I am willing to hear from the public regarding those numbers. Right now, focusing at the Doyle School, which is the first building to see that surge of student enrollment, we now have three consecutive classes of over 100 students, which, to my recollection, might not ever have happened as long as I've been here. Right now, the third grade is the smallest group of 96. The second grade is the largest group of 126. The first grade is 113. The kindergarten is 110. Obviously, the grades in 654, perhaps the surge hasn't hit there yet. The majority, the majority of the surge in enrollment is with the younger students. So of course, at some point, that, those numbers are going to impact the intermediate school. Hence, the move to put the New Highland Avenue Learning Annex and Recreation Center together and bring the fourth grade down from the intermediate school and allow for enough sections for all the grade levels and have enough space in the intermediate school. Hopefully, by the time that these three-digit-sized class sections get to the intermediate school, where it will be two grades and we'll have the room to accommodate more than four sections.
Thank you, Mr. Albro. Gentlemen, any questions on that before we open up? Okay, opening hearing of citizens on anything you'd like to talk about.
Melissa Cruz, 335 Columbia Boulevard. At the last Board of Ed meeting on May 22nd, Board of Education President Saad At the last Board of Ed meeting on May twenty-second, Board of Education President stated the following regarding class sizes. The goal is to be well under twenty-five. With that being said, you're reducing sections, making a grade what was five sections, now four, which will go from nineteen to twenty students to twenty-four to twenty-five, all while keeping our fingers crossed that we don't get some new students in over the summer or even during the school year, which we know is continuing to happen. I also asked each board member that was present the following question. Would you increase class sizes or add a section if that meant putting a trailer in the front of Doyle School? Mr. O'Byrne answered the following. I prefer to see smaller class sizes. He's not opposed to trailers. Mr. Neves also agreed with him. Mr. Fallon, you as well, said, "I definitely would see smaller class sizes on a temporary situation, having trailers at Doyle." You can go back to the live stream, and I quoted you from there. So I'm asking the Board of Ed now, what has been the change from a few weeks ago? Why didn't we add a trailer to, we should actually be adding two, one to help out the first grade going into the second, and to keep the third grade at five sections as they deserve?
When, I, I'll speak for myself first. When I was brought that question, I was expecting class sizes to be in the thirties. And that's why, yes, twenty-five, twenty-four. I don't have a problem with twenty-four, twenty-five. I don't, you have a second grade who's been near that level for two years now.
Those parents should be here complaining.
Okay, but you're regardless.
But no, I actually did state that, because I brought to the attention that the first grade currently had twenty-five kids. So I brought that to your attention, that class sizes were there at ours, and our kids had, we actually asked how many kids were in the grade. We asked Ms. Schmidt. Mr. Alba followed and said, "Give me exact numbers," but they said between twenty and twenty-one kids.
And we also talked about the enrollment going up.
You did have that information, Mr. Fallon.
Exactly, we did, and that's why I thought we were in...
No, I'm sorry, you did. Yeah, Ms. Schmidt stated what the numbers were currently in the...
I understand that, but we were talking about not knowing what the true numbers were going to be, and that they were going to be in the thirty range.
No, that was never brought up, and you can re-watch it.
Well, that's how I took it. You may not have understood it that way, that's how I understood it.
That wasn't how my question was stated.
Okay. That's how I understood it.
Okay. Mr. O'Byrne?
Ideally, what would you like to see the class sizes be?
Where they are. Why would we decrease class sizes? Why can't we just put a bigger trailer? What's, we're putting one there for, to reduce, why don't we put two to help with the class sizes? So all the kids are where they should be and where they deserve. Mr. Neves, as the board president, said, "We like to keep..." The goal is to be well under twenty-five. How is twenty-four, twenty-five, well under twenty-five?
Well, Mr. Neves doesn't speak for the board unless we all vote on something, and you ask us each of our opinions.
Right.
I didn't say anything about the twenty-five thing.
No, you didn't.
And what happened in the last, was it month now, since we've last had a meeting? I went back and I looked back when I was in school here.
I, to be honest with you, when you were in school, things were completely different. So unless you're an educator and you can actually say what's going on in the classrooms, that's not a valid statement.
You ask me my opinion.
It's not a valid statement. Schools are extremely...
Ms. Cruz, I will also point out that as a board, we're required to worry about all students in the district.
I agree with you, that's what I'm saying.
And I'm gonna, excuse me, I'm gonna say that on something, when we have students at twenty-five, twenty-six in the class versus twenty-four, twenty-five, that was eighteen, how, you're, you're asking us to change for...
Wait a minute, what was that?
Excuse me, let me finish my sentence, please.
Okay, go ahead.
You're asking us to, to change third grade to keep it low, but yet, second grade, it's okay to keep them at high numbers.
That's not what I said. I said, "Get two trailers and actually lower both grade levels." You're, you're decreasing something that was already there. Why didn't they do that last year then? And help out the first grade? And then second grade would have been at the same numbers.
Yeah.
You guys, I've been coming here for over probably six years now, and I know you're tired of looking at me, and to be honest, I'm tired of wasting my time, but it's the same story every time. We don't have a spacing issue. Meanwhile, our kids were taking a class section away. Why? Why are we taking that section away?
Because we don't have the room, and we have enough...
Because we don't have the room.
Excuse me. Because we don't have the room, and putting into the four sections will still keep us under our minimum of twenty-five.
You can guarantee that? Under twenty-five?
I cannot guarantee anything.
Right, you can't guarantee that.
So when the numbers change, and they go above twenty-five, then you can come back and look at it.
So why can't we put a trailer there to keep the kids having what they've had at Doyle School? Why are we taking something away from them?
Why do we need to give them something that we don't have room for?
Why don't we have the room? I felt spacing's never been an issue.
No one's ever said space without a issue.
Go back, come on.
We know that, Melissa. That's why we're getting a new school.
Yeah, I would disagree on the space not being an issue. The whole reason for a new school is exactly that.
Right, but we should have done that before, so we were proactive.
I, I agree. I said at a board meeting, you know, wasn't throwing anybody on the bus, but I said we should have been doing this years ago. Fortunately, this is the situation we have. My opinion or any individual board member's opinion, I can change anything.
So then if we're saying that, if you want to go back to the class, and I do care about all students as well, Mr. Fallon, I wish those parents were here, why wouldn't you give them a trailer so they can have a smaller class size?
Because they're at the twenty-five number.
So that's the comfortable size for you in elementary school. Have you done any research on the advantages of having smaller class sizes versus twenty to twenty-five?
You actually know that I've done that, because I had a class with your nephew with thirty-three kids.
Right, and let's look at the test results. Where were the test results for those kids that were in those classes? When we put that graph up there and watched how that class of twenty-five kids did?
Are there any other questions that you have, Ms. Cruz?
You guys are disappointed.
Hi.
Hi.
Nicole Porja, three, four, eight, Windsor. I just want to clarify, so what is the exact reason for not putting a second trailer or more trailers?
Because the class size at twenty-five, less than twenty-five is, is appropriate for the board.
Okay, so you don't want to add any more trailers to the property because...
We, for a temporary situation, we'd have to add many more trailers to get all the classes to be at eighteen or nineteen.
Okay, well, just maybe just the top, maybe just the top ones, like, it seems like it would be third and second grade would be the top, the top largest classrooms, right?
It would be third, second, and first.
Okay.
Actually, all classes would, to get below the eighteen, nineteen, which is what is being asked of every single one, every single grade at Doyle.
So it's not a money issue, it's just you're happy with the size of the classrooms, and you want to...
On a temporary basis for being twenty-four, twenty-five, on a whole number, with knowing that many, several students will be going out for the major classes, yes, I am.
Okay, I just want to clarify. I know probably not many of you were in, speaking as last, this last school year, first, the first grade. Being in a first grade classroom versus being in a third or second or even kindergarten classroom was like night and day. That's just five students, too many. I feel like you really are doing a disservice to not only the students, but the teachers are, it's so hard to be a teacher in those classrooms of that size. I know you think, "Oh, twenty-four versus twenty." It's really not that big of a difference, but I feel like you might be losing teachers because of this, and I know they're not looking forward to that size, and I know we have a lot of great teachers, so I just, I don't know if this is like the final, but I just want to say that it's really a big difference if you're in the classrooms, and it's a, it's a shame we just can't add maybe one extra one to eliminate some of the space and move it around.
I have to piggyback off of what Ms. Cruz is talking about in regards to the Doyle addition. I ask my first question, addendum. Has the board held meetings with the mayor, council, Woodbridge staff, consultants, and stakeholders? And Mr. Fallon said that those meetings have not been conducted yet. However, we're making decisions on class sizes that we have not included our community in deciding for. I understand that this is a volunteer position, gentlemen. I understand that we have a lot of opinions about classroom sizes and not educators except for Mr. Garvin, and I think we better hear our community before we make decisions in regards to our class sizes.
Hi. Ryan Guglielmi, two, Rose Street. I want to start with a different approach, because I'm not sure where the defensiveness is coming from this night, but it, the tone of this meeting, it, it's putting the citizens who have children in the building in a place where we feel like we're fighting to earn something for our children. Mr. Fallon, you said there, "Why would we add something to Doyle?" Or "Why would we give something to Doyle?" And I, I'm, I'm going to ask to finish now, as you asked Ms. Cruz for you to finish. So when Melissa was speaking, there's a defensiveness that we're asking for more. We're all parents in this room, with the exception of Mr. O'Byrne. Yes, that's what we do. We ask for our children. So the Board of Education has a mission statement. We're all stakeholders, then have delineated responsibilities. And as a Board of Education member, albeit a volunteer position, you all acknowledge this mission statement. So under facilities, it states that facilities maintain a safe and secure environment that is conducive to learning and teaching. So as an educator myself, I agree, I teach at the elementary level with twenty-four to twenty-five students in a class. Is it acceptable? Absolutely. But the problem here is the district in which you are Board of Education members, it is not what has been done. And due to the problem that has been discussed for upwards of five years now, the problem is increasing. So when we did have that initial meeting with the mayor and council, and Mayor Sarlo acknowledged that the new facility would be built, it's as if we should just let the two years of our children's education go by and accept what is. My son is soon to be in first grade. I'm not okay to accept him to receive lesser education than he would have five years ago because of a spacing issue. So this has nothing to do with fighting who's right or who's wrong. This is trying to get everybody on the same side of whether or not the optics of the trailers look good to the community or not, whether the optics is that there was a mistake made, not acknowledged, and now this is a Band-Aid. I could care less as a parent. But the problem is, for the next two years, there's a space concern, there's an education concern, there's a learning concern, and my son will be at the detriment of that, and I'm not okay with that as a mom. Additionally, with the numbers Mr. Alba shared this evening, what is slated to be the addition at Doyle School, and we have discussed, I said personally to Mayor Sarlo that night here, I don't know if the extension is large enough. Because I know we're not, heaven forbid I use this word, but Westmont's not done. We're increasing those numbers there, and then numbers increase through the primary grades. My concern is that we're putting Band-Aids on things. And the community is mad at the board, and the board gets mad at the community, and the mayor and council is nowhere to be seen until the white horse needs to ride in and try and save it. But all the while, our kids, not any of your children, are at the detriment of these decisions. So I don't necessarily have a question, but the tone of this conversation should not be defensive on either side. This should be all community stakeholders trying to figure out how to fix this rather than pointing fingers. The trailers are not a bad idea. You're right, twenty-four, twenty-five in a class is acceptable, but it's not what we had, and it has not been past practice. Thank you.
Thank you.
A few months ago, I asked the superintendent of schools to poll the teachers, asking if they would prefer trailers versus large class sizes. What was the result of that poll? Mr. Neves said that that would take place.
The teachers are not opposed to teaching into trailers, modulars, excuse me. The teachers have not expressed a concern for the class size.
And was that poll, how was that poll sent out?
The principal polled her staff.
And what was the questions on the poll?
I would have to get that to you. Mr. Fallon, if I can interject something? Sure. I don't want to preclude anybody from the public in speaking. In making this decision, and it is the superintendent's decision with the support of the board, I look at the last ten years, and many of us in the room, board members included, might have had children involved in the Doyle School in the span of those ten years. And we're talking about numbers, and the numbers are real. I can't deny the numbers. However, these numbers have been here for a while. If you allow me to, I'm going to read off the averages of each grade level since two thousand fifteen. The kindergarten, beginning in two thousand fifteen, twenty-four, twenty-one, twenty-two, nineteen, seventeen, twenty-two. We added the fifth section, eighteen, with a fifth section, twenty-three, with a fifth section, twenty-one. First grade, beginning in fifteen, nineteen, eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty, and five sections, twenty-four and five sections. Second grade, twenty, 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 twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one in five sections, nineteen in five sections. Third grade, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, the last two years in five sections. What we're projecting for next year is twenty-two in the kindergarten, twenty-one or twenty-two in first grade, twenty-three, twenty-four, possibly twenty-five in second grade, I should say twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-three, twenty-four in third grade. And I, I take great consideration in hearing about the defensiveness. I, I'm not defensive about anything. I'm, I'm looking at the numbers, and I, I don't want to diminish anything. I understand the public's concern. I'm, I'm, I wish September of twenty-five happened tomorrow, and I, and I also have a concern for what happens in the future. I can't predict. Even if we, if we were to add the trailers, it's a valid point. We can have students come in during the summer, we have students leave. We can have more than twenty-five in a trailer, if it, if it turned out that way. Now, last year, from June to June this year, we actually lost more students than we gained as a district, and we're pretty much equal in Doyle School. And it ranges from year to year. And obviously, depending upon the completion of development at Westmont, those numbers are going to change. So when the superintendent makes that recommendation, he considers everybody who, who says something at a meeting, everyone who reaches out to me, and I consider the board members as well. This is the public's opportunity to speak, and I would never deny the, the opportunity of the public to exercise that right to speak. And please know that I listen, despite my listening difficulties, and the board members listen. So I do appreciate you coming out here and putting yourself up here and reaching out to me. I don't want to diminish any of that. I understand that. These are tough decisions, and right now, that's the decision that I've made. And when we talk about class size, we're obviously talking about the ratio of students to adults in the classroom. You know, already, I'm working with Ms. Schmidt about possibly employing more paraprofessionals to increase the number of adults that are in the classroom. If I can't put them in a different space, if I can't make it one teacher to eighteen students in a separate space, perhaps I can make it two adults in a classroom of twenty-three and have an even smaller ratio. Granted, there'll be one teacher, the main teacher, and one assistant in the classroom. But if we're concerned about ratios, that's something I can consider to address it. And of course, I'll continue to monitor the enrollment throughout the summer, and if I need to make a change, I'll make a change. The board has heard the public tonight. The board can direct me to go in a different direction. I'm, I can promise you that it's going to be discussed. And whether it's four people or a hundred and forty people that raise the concern, the board does listen, and the board has to make a tough decision. And that was the superintendent's recommendation. So again, I don't take it personally. It's part of my job. I respect the fact that you express your opinion. You deserve the right to do that, and frankly, I welcome it. And I like to think as a superintendent, I'm inviting anyone to do that, and most of you take the opportunity to do so when you have to. So the board, the superintendent, this is their stance on it. Speaking for myself, it wasn't something I did willy-nilly, for lack of a better phrase. I looked into it. I looked at our past numbers. I have faith in my teaching staff that have worked with larger numbers, and I guarantee that our state test scores will improve. No, but if I put twelve in a class, I can't guarantee it either. I'm fully aware of all the data and information and research about smaller class sizes. I'm fully aware of it. So I just wanted to express that in terms of the work that I've done to look at our past and thinking about my future in our district. I respect the fact that you have that concern. And to be honest, it's my concern as well, and I have a variety of concerns, and I tried to address it in the best way that I could. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Albro.
Bonnie Taylor, sixty-four, Woodbridge Street. I would be remiss if I didn't end with Janine. Wow. I hate to see you go, but personally, I understand the need for change, and for so many years, you've been a constant up there on the board. You've seen superintendents, administrators, BOE members, council members come and go, but you have been our lone star female, serving your community, returning every email, being a constant professional and a role model. And you will be missed. Thank you, Mrs. Murray.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor.
Hearing non-seeming, closing the hearing of citizens? Ms. Murray, anything online?
No, there's none.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I didn't really get a chance to get many words out there. I've been on this board for almost three years now, and I wait. Every single time a meeting comes for parents to show up, and there's usually the same parents that show up and voice their concerns, and you think we got defensive up here, I can't speak for the board members, I'm not defensive. I'm not angry at anybody, I'm not upset, et cetera, et cetera. I'm happy that you come and say things to us, whether it's yelling at us, questioning us, it doesn't matter. I'm glad you come. I wish this entire auditorium was filled with people. It's not going to happen, unfortunately. I've waited three years for it to happen, it hasn't happened. I did speak to a lot of people. I may not be a parent, I may not be a teacher, I have no intention of being a teacher, and I've got a couple of years before I become a parent, but I spoke to a lot of people. Anybody who voted for me knows I went door-to-door down in Westmont, talking to people down there about the ballooning size of population. When I got in my first weekend, I spoke to people who told me there was not a numbers I might be a volunteer, but there's people that we pay, and they give me their opinions. One who I spoke with today, who's the most, not the most important of them all, but you know, the tip of the spear, Mr. Alba, and we went over those numbers again, and he told me, you know, principals, teachers, he's reliant on them, he believes in them, and he thinks that the numbers that we're seeing, they are more than capable of handling. And I, I believe him. I've known Mr. Alba for a long time, since I was a child. And lastly, what I was first starting off with my opinion, I went back and looked at all the numbers, and no, it is not the same world that it was when I was a child. But I went back and looked at all the numbers that Mr. Alba laid out there, and were there years where there was small class sizes? Yeah, it'd be great if we could have ten kids in every class, maybe not ten, might be a little bit too small for socialization purposes. But were there numbers eighteen, seventeen? There was. Was there twenty-four, twenty-three? Yeah, and I was one of them for many of my years. Twenty-three, twenty-four, the highest I went was twenty-five, I believe. I, I don't know what else to tell you besides what, what he said, that it seems like we need to shrug our shoulders and just say it is what it is, and I'll never believe in that statement. But right now, what we're trying to do is the best-case scenario, and it wasn't that these things got shut down, these trailers, and saying that we don't want them anymore because of money or because of optics, at least not for me. I promise you, it's not because of optics. I don't care if there's twenty trailers out there to get the job done. The optics will never matter, like, calling them modulators or calling them trailers, I don't care. But it, there, there was a lot of things considered here, and when this school does end up getting built, I hope that the mayor and council and this board, whether I'm around or not after this next election, does well by the stakeholders and has those meetings to discuss what's going to go on in them, and everybody gets their chance to speak. Whether they get what they want or not, it's a different story, but that's my piece.